I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Alley?
It's a while we get from New Zealand.
I can see her over there. Ms. Bash?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Here.
Paul is here. Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ms. Fenton Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Swanson?
Here.
All right. Prove agenda?
I moved to approve the agenda as presented.
There's motion, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Oh.
Kathy? Kathy?
Motion carries. Moving on to public announcements, recognition, upcoming events.
You'll see in the agenda, there's lots going on here in the school district. Tomorrow night is a community-wide event with the Evansville Night Out. And Evansville School District will have a presence there. We have a popcorn stand and a photo booth. And I think probably most of us here in the room will be there tomorrow night. And we've been promoting a meet and greet to meet me and Jess Erdahl and Kim Katzenmeyer, the new members of the admin team that will be available tomorrow night. Cheer practice started on the 31st, football on the first, golf started yesterday, Monday, and then swimming also this week. Next week, we have cross-country and soccer and volleyball getting underway. And then full steam ahead on the 24th, we have new teacher training. And then the week after that, it'll be all hands on deck with that school professional development. So it's right around the corner, Tuesday school, Friday, September 1st.
And Mitch Larson is gonna be in the whole thing.
Yes.
All right, move on.
Good job.
Do you got like a green jacket or a gold jacket?
Yeah. No, it's blue.
Blue jacket.
Is it satin? You'll have to come. You'll see it.
Nothing else. Moving on to public presentation. All right, Ms. One here tonight, Melissa Hamon. Punishment matrix.
Hi, everybody. I know I've been like spamming your files, your emails lately about various things. But something basically this afternoon came to my mind. And there's a lot of administrative teachers that are not ensconced in policy, such as the handbook, but they are available publicly on the website. And I would be in favor of continuing to have it available, rather than putting it in a handbook, because it is still very punitive sounding and it doesn't leave a good taste in your mouth in terms of where a kid reading that, well, they think I'm gonna like be the back of the Ripper or something. Then you have the available, have the document available to have a conversation during the first incident to let the kid know what's gonna happen. But you don't have it ensconced in policy. And also because this stuff can change, and you'd expect this to change. If it's not working, then you need to change it. You wanna have a disciplinary procedure that works. And you should be able to determine whether or not it works by whether you have a high or low recidivism rate. So that was just my take. It was sort of like a aha moment for me this afternoon that I didn't really have an opportunity to say, well, yeah, just that seems like it would be a good place to put it, an administrative procedure. So that's on the first line.
Thank you. Right, no other public presentation. Moving on to information and discussion, district administrators update.
Good evening, board and administration and guests here tonight. Thank you for being here. Lots been going on here. If Paige can make that a little bigger, I can actually read what I wrote a couple months ago. Yes, I'm getting to that age where I have a doc, eye doctor next week, so hopefully I can see better. Just looking at the different aspects of our teaching plan and the things that I've been a part of along with a lot of my administrative team, as we're aware, we've been working a lot on the student code of conduct and the dress code, meet the needs of all students, aligning our district's educational assistance to the needs of our special education students, other family community partnerships. Attended a movie night here at Lake Leona on the 29th. That was really neat to see one of our students doing that as a senior project. Also attended the Evansville Education Foundation Board meeting on the 31st. And the group will be announcing the grant recipients at our breakfast on the 29th. 29th, thank you Paige, keeping me on my toes there. Engage your parents, about some transportation policy questions and requests. And then we've been working on implementing a new communication tool called Remind to increase engagement with parents under professional growth and leadership. Been working quite a bit to be ready for our new business manager and helping Mr. Schwartz and our new elementary principal Erdahl get up to speed, as well as Ms. Katzenmeyer, I don't have her on there, but haven't had the opportunity to talk to her as much. We're planning the professional development schedule for teachers and support staff. We had an agenda today and we worked on getting that polished and ready to go. And then making sure we're ready for the educator effectiveness of teacher and admin evaluation cycle that's coming up. Finding good feedback to our staff on how they're doing. And then on their operational efficiency and effectiveness, working quite a bit on the last, since the last board meeting, on getting a plan ready for the operational referendum. Didn't do any interviews this week, but last week, in the week before, lots of interviewing. Paige and I met with Niola Watson and I met with them again last week. They're the company that the district is contracting with to support us on making sure all our board policies are up to speed and compliance. And participating in a DPI Office of School Finance webinar. DPI has a series of computer portals and they all start with Y's. Y's data, there's Y's finance, there's Y's dash, there's probably like 20 of them. And they just came out with this new one for school finance. They're converting the old, that we share data with DPI using this portal. They have a series of webinars. So we don't have a new business manager on board yet. I'm making sure I'm aware of those things. And I did share with Mr. Parsons, our new business manager, and he's watching them remotely till he comes on board. And then just working with Griffin and Jake from TC Network. I met them a few times to just get up to speed on the district's technology support team and looking at whether we need to review and revise our technical. It's been a couple weeks since our last meeting and I'll try to keep you updated on what I've been working on.
So what's next here? 2024 referendum planning.
So tonight, we're just kind of kicking off the discussion about referendum and how we want to proceed towards next April. Which I assume is the date that we want to, would look to put a question on the ballot. But just as we look through here, the board has some flexibility on when you go to referendum. The one rule is that you must pass a resolution at least 70 days before the date of the election. So for spring, if we are looking at April 2nd of '24, we have to approve that resolution by January 22nd. There is likely a primary on February 20th. If we were real ambitious and wanted to have an election, then we could, we'd have to have the resolution by the 12th. And if we wanted to hold off till the presidential election in November, the last date that we would have to approve a resolution would be the 27th of August. So just some dates to keep in mind. My recommendation is April. That gives us some flexibility. I'm optimistic a referendum would pass, but if for some reason it would not, we could still go again on the November 5th ballot if need be. So to keep that January 22nd date in mind, my recommendation would be the January 10th board meeting. The board consider a resolution to go to referendum on April 2nd. Going on down, here are some recommendations for prior to you passing a resolution. We need to develop an estimated budget for the next, how many years we are thinking of for a referendum. We can go for as many years as we want. Three, four, five are pretty typical. You can also go for recurring, which just means it goes on forever. There are districts that have done that and been successful, that type of thing. We need to determine the amount of revenue needed for the years that we want in the referendum. And that's one of the drawbacks of a recurring. We'll have, we'd have a hard enough time projecting out three years from today. If we want to say we want this to go on forever, we, I mean, how do we know in five years or 10 years how much money we're gonna need? And once you set that recurring amount of whatever, it's, you can't go back and change it. You could go to referendum again, but that's why most districts go to a non-recurring, with a finite amount of time. We need to communicate the financial need that we address, that needs to be addressed by the referendum with all our staff members and community. Survey is a common tool for that. We'll be listening to school perceptions here in a few minutes to learn more about how they could help us with it. And in addition to sharing information, we need to get feedback in that same process, getting a gauge for support for a referendum. We need to review that feedback and then identify what's the most realistic possibility for a successful referendum. You know, we might put a few different dollar amounts on a survey and ask what the level of support is for each of those amounts. And that would give us some idea of where our best chance for success is. We need legal counsel to craft the resolution and the ballot question that we would take action on in, by January. And then approve the resolution and ballot question. Going down, Paige. So once the resolution's approved, here are some things I'd recommend that we do. We need to develop a message for staff and community to explain the referendum request. For administration, we need to work together to ensure a unified and consistent referendum message. It's real important, you know, in all aspects of board governance and administration, but especially it's when we're asking for the community to give us revenue, that they hear the same message from everybody in a position of leadership for sure, and hopefully everybody who works here as well. Then we need to identify who's, you know, where are we gonna present this information? Who's gonna be the spokesperson? And with those meetings, some can be informational. We use social media and websites and newspapers and get as much publicity out to as many people as possible with the message that we need. It's also important that we can identify key stakeholders, key members of the community that would be willing to work in a, as part of a yes advocacy group. I can't, as the district administrator, ask people to vote yes. You, when you're not sitting at this table in a meeting that's called order, you can ask people to vote yes or no. But when you're in session, you cannot advocate one way or another. All of us can share information and explain what our needs are and why they're important. But what I can't do is just say, please vote yes. But we, if we can find a group of committed and supportive people to serve in that capacity, we can do that. And like you said, here in a few minutes, School Perceptions is gonna be talking to us. So I won't go too far into this next piece. But I do recommend using a company like School Perceptions to help us gather data and solicit feedback and then use that information to make a decision. And they've shared a proposal here. You can see what, you know, they'll, they'll help us with those things that I just described. They'll design the survey for us and give us lots of opportunities to massage and tweak and change that survey. Then they'll collect the data and do the data analysis on it and then share that data with us in a manner that's easy to understand, easy to share with other people. They also have a few other services that they provide. They'll mail out the survey and, and. You going now, Paige? Yep.
Did we look at any other companies or just School Perception?
This is the only one that I've looked at. And they have other services that they are able to provide. My suggestion, if we go this route, you know, to have them provide the prepaid postage envelopes. It just saves our staff the time doing that. And then process the paper surveys, do a comment analysis. There are opportunities for the people to put written comments on the survey. And then lastly, back up a little bit. Yeah, and then just help us if there's any folks that responded in a language other than English they can translate. And lastly, down at the bottom, a kind of a matrix to show kind of all the different things that we need to kind of think about as we're doing this. First of all, you know, we want, we want to keep the message as simple and concise as we can. So like three to five key messages about what our needs are. We want easy access to answers, so having FAQ area on the website, things like that, where they can have a quick way to find answers. Having a dedicated phone number or email address where they can submit a question if they have one. And then we need to go to where the people are. Having a meeting here in the boardroom and asking people to come, we may get a handful. But if we can find events where large numbers of people are already congregating and go and ask to have a few minutes to share information, that's the best way to disseminate the information face to face. And so we need to look at the management of this process. And you as a board and the district as a whole is responsible for that. The people that we need to engage in this, our staff need to be very knowledgeable. Because they're, they're out in the community every day, shopping at stores, you know, going to activities. And people are gonna ask them, what's this referendum and why should I support it? So we need to update the staff regularly and keep them informed and engaged. We need to use electronic resources to make sure we're getting that information out in our website. Be very important for that. We don't per se have a district newsletter, but we could develop, you know, some mailings for that purpose, for the referendum purpose. And we can decide whether we want to have like a mail. That's usually more common if we're doing a capital referendum. We want to show pictures of the building or whatever we're looking at changing. And then just get, you know, contact the main media outlets in the area and some information in those outlets. We need to have coordination meetings, you know, regularly. Who's gonna do it and by when they're gonna do it. Talk to those different groups there, the civic groups, social media again, getting things out that way. Flyers, referendum shorts, TV if we can get, you know. And then there's just some examples of, you know, again, how we will update the board. We had a community action committee on the 2018 referendum. We could, we can determine whether we want to resurrect a group like that to maybe be our yes committee. Email and other forms of communication with focused updates and pre-election reminders. And then just get posters out to all of our outlets. Facebook Live, some districts use that to, you know, if they're having a meeting, they may also Facebook Live it or YouTube it like we're doing here, so that people can observe it remotely. ICL is very, usually very receptive to, you know, school districts on to talk about their needs and whatnot and also do press releases and interviews. Those are, you know, lots of stuff to sift through and to identify. Again, I think on that memo that I had, at the top of this memo, it kind of outlined the things that we need to think about mostly before the resolution. And then we have some time to, to plan our campaign from once we pass the resolution till April. Yeah, that's kind of where we're at. I did talk with PMA today. And they're the financial consultants that helped us, helped Evansville with the 2018 referendum. And they still are helping us with financing type of things. Very helpful company and they offered up significant support in the, you know, making sure we can, very concise, specific, about our financial need and help us create graphics and materials that we can share with the community. They even said, you know, if you need us to come to a meeting or two to explain, they're more than willing to do that. And because we, for other sort of services, if you don't, with what I just described, they wouldn't, there would be no fee for that. They would help. Part of the services they already provide, so.
Any questions for Steve?
Can you remind me how many referendums we've been through before? Because we obviously.
Right, yeah. So last year, Parkview was part of two unsuccessful referendums, November and April. Then they did, we did pass a successful in 2020, 2017, and then.
I've done it a few times.
Yeah, a few times, right. And it's, you know, the, the old saying, don't reinvent the wheel. Most districts use a process pretty similar to what I described. Some use different types of support allies to help them. We did use School Perceptions last year at Parkview. Prior to that, we. A company, we, we did data a few times and we just did it, you know, which was pretty challenging to, to. And it's the thing about using an outside company is it's more anonymous or confidential. Never see information, it goes to the third party. They segregate it and put it into a nice report and you just get the data. You don't have any idea. and you just get the data, you don't have any idea submitted. So people are usually more comfortable submitting things if it's, if they know it's, you know. I thought the data they provided was very helpful and there are probably other com, I'm sure there are other companies out there. I'm not familiar with, um, I have, I could pro, I could probably try to get another, vote, you know, here before the next board meeting, but as we'll see in a few minutes, the, kind of the timeline, if we want to use a survey, we, we gotta get going probably in the next 30 days to get underway.
All right, any other questions? Uh, moving on to School Perceptions' presentation.
And I don't know, is Darren on there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you, will I be able to see on the slide?
This is the team, if you accept our proposal, that would be working on your project to explore support for, uh, an operational referendum. Uh, the gentleman on the far left is our president and founder of the company, Bill Foster. Kerry is our assistant who will help us gather addresses, email databases and such, so we get the survey to every available taxpayer that we can. And, um, my name is Darren Severs. Um, I've been with the company for 13 months. Prior to that, I worked for Slinger School District for 27 years. Uh, counselor, high school principal, elementary principal, but the last, uh, 10 years i- as superintendent. And, um, my, my experience with School Perceptions was in Dr. Litsky's role where we, we passed a, a capital referendum. Um, we'd use their staff and parent satisfaction surveys. Um, and we even did, we had something in Slinger called COVID where we did a COVID survey to find out what opening school would needed to look like because we had people yelling at us from each end of the spectrum. Not sure if that happened in Evansville, but it was very helpful to, uh, send a survey and, and give voice to the people that weren't emailing or calling on the phone. And so that, that's why I value the company. I, I left Slinger because of family circumstances. I needed to be more mobile for, to support my, my family better. My mom in Minnesota, my son in Colorado. And so this job allows me to stay in education and help districts on the other side of the desk. Uh, next slide. Um, so I, I've, I've, I've been part of their process. The company's been in existence for 21 years. We've done over 10,000 staff, student and parent surveys for school improvement and we've helped over 900 districts in all 50 states with planning, uh, strategic planning and referendum planning. Next. Um, so the question you have as a board is, why would you do a survey? Why would you pay the money for a survey? Well, if you're, if you're considering asking your community for hundreds of thousands of dollars or in some cases millions of dollars, the best thing you can do before you ask that question is educate your community about your needs, gather data to understand your community's priorities, establish a tax tolerance associated with what you're asking, and then decide when or if a referendum would take place. I hear you're talking about maybe April, you could go in February, you could go in November. And then along the way, we also ask some basic overall satisfaction que, questions that we ask of every district we work with in all 50 states and we'll be able to provide you feedback on how your community is feeling about the job you're doing compared to other districts, your size with your, uh, demographic. Next. And the whole idea is that people are more likely to support a plan if they understand the plan and they have a voice in creating the plan. Um, I heard a great plan there for educating your community. We feel we're a, a big piece of that education. Uh, when I took the job with, with School Perceptions, some of my superintendent colleagues said, oh, you're going with that company that sells referendums. That's not what we do. We don't sell a referendum. We educate about a referendum. We take what you're thinking about and what you're considering and we put it in front of your taxpayers and we ask them to react so that you can plan according to what your needs are, but also based on what your community will support rather than just putting a resolution together blindly and hoping. Next. Our approach is very unique. Um, as far as I know, we're the only company in, in the country that does not random sample. Uh, we have an approach where we feel every taxpayer should be given the opportunity to tell you how they feel, not a random sample by phone or a random sample of mailers. We mail a survey to every taxpayer in your school district. So how do we do that? Uh, we get a mailing list from your school attendance zone and we provide them with a paper survey in their mailbox. Next. And we customize it to your exact circumstance. Uh, we put all of your mascot logos, your colors, and we meet with your leadership and you as a school board and we put several drafts in front of you so that it is exactly written in the manner that you need to ask the questions that you want answers to. Next. Um, they can take it two ways. They can fill it out via paper and mail it back to us and then we process, process it at our headquarters. Or they can take it via the internet and then their results, uh, will load into our server in the Evansville file. Um, it's, uh, encrypted process where each survey has a unique code and all, can only be taken once. So there's no opportunity for the yeses or the nos to be stuffed by more than one person. Each person takes it once, each property owner. And if a husband and wife in the same house both want to take a survey, we'll get them two codes. Next. And then we write a opening letter, uh, explaining the situation. In your case, uh, the, the need for some supplemental funding in order to maintain the programs they've come to, to expect from your school district. Next. And then we also gather demographic information. Um, while we, there, the process is 100% anonymous, we do ask them their age and we ask them which municipality they live in. This is an example of Watomas, so that we can disaggregate for you your support within different age groups, your support within parents or not parents. 25% of your community is parents, 75 are not parents and non-staff. They're not inside your schools on a daily basis. We can disaggregate your results by different tax municipalities. Maybe a township just had a tax increase for some roads or some improvements in the, in their area of your school district and we need to help them understand what the school needs. And then we also ask the question about how they like to hear from you so that you can know how best to communicate back your intentions, the results of the survey, all the things that they need to know before they go vote. Next. We'll put graphs in there. Uh, we believe the fewer words, the better. Obviously, we need to articulate your, your message for you, but graphs about enrollment, uh, next, graphs about the mill rate, educating about your financial circumstances can be done much better oftentimes with pictures and images than with words because a lot of people skim. And we gotta, we've gotta get to the heart of the matter and help them understand very clearly what you're asking for. Next. And then we, we limit the questions to three or four per survey, really. Um, the demographic information is just identifiers so that we know, um, the age group and where they live, but we try to, particularly with an operational, we'll only have probably two or three key questions on there that we need to ask in order to gauge their level of support. We may put different levels of funding or we may put different situations of what cuts would need to be made to gather their input. We will meet with you, we'll meet with PRA, we work with them and Baird and all the financial, um, experts all the time to understand the financials, uh, perspective of the district. And then we bring these results back to you and give you a summary report that tells you exactly how your community feels, all the data points and all the comments. Next. So again, these are just some sample slides. You can page through the next couple. They just show you how we use, if in a capital situation, we'd work with architects to tell the story. If we're combining schools, um, we tell the story, we talk about the tax impact, we'll show that on a page. Next. And ask them to establish their priorities of what they, what they value in the district and then ultimately ask the question, how much of a tax increase would you support? In your case, the, the perfect situation is for you as a board and leadership team to establish with PRA exactly what you're asking for, for three, four or five years or on a recurring basis, that works best. But if you're not sure, we can put a couple of different tax thresholds and dollar amounts in there and articulate to them what each of those mean and what they would get for that amount of support. Next. And so, um, bottom line is, we, we've been doing this, this, uh, referendum work for over 21 years. Um, we, we feel very confident in our process and to give you some perspective, um, in our 21 years, our accuracy rate has been 95%. That does not mean 95% of the referendum is passed. That means that our data has matched the voter reaction 95% of the time. That means if a, a board didn't have support on the survey, but they still went after the referendum, that 95% of the time, the survey was right and the voters did not support it if they didn't support it in the survey. Our, a new area of our business, part of the reason I have a job is, is Minnesota is really latching on to our services. At the current rate, right now, we're 98 for 98 as far as predicting, um, taking our survey results and having the election results match the results of the survey. So it's highly predictive because we get a, a strong response rate and ask the right questions on your behalf and then bring those answers back to you. So that's, that's all I have for you about our process. Are there any questions? Oh, you could go one more slide. Um, one more. This is a timeline that you'd want to follow. Looking ahead, if you were going to go for a April vote, we feel our data is most accurate if, if we gather it and report it to you six months or less in advance of the election. So we would want to be writing a survey in August and September and opening the survey to your community for about three weeks in October, two weeks and three weekends, a window of time, about like that. And then we'll compile the results, give you your results in November and then you'll have November and December to consider your next step so you can write that resolution by January 22nd. So are there any questions from anyone on the board about our process?
I don't think so.
Very good presentation.
Thank you. And like I said, um, we're ready, you know, if you need to look around a bit more, uh, certainly feel free. As soon as we hear from Dr. Litsky that you're, um, you're interested in partnering with us, we'll schedule a kickoff meeting within a few days. We know this is a very busy time with teachers coming back. I saw all of your, your planning and educator effectiveness, makes me miss Slinger, but, um, I, I will say that, uh, as soon as you give us the green light, we'll huddle up with the key members of your team. Sometimes a board has a committee, sometimes they leave it to the leadership team to work on this and bring it back to you. Um, but we will start writing drafts and start to piece together your story on behalf of Evansville.
Thank you very much, Darren.
Okay, we'll be in touch. Have a great night. Good luck, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.
That was a good presentation. Um, moving on to 2023, 24, short-term borrowing.
Evansville, like most school districts, are required to, uh, short-term borrow from time to time and that's usually a result that's the wrong one. So while she's finding that, um, short-term borrowing is often the result of when state aid is given to school districts, they have set dates that, uh, they give us our state aid. And sometimes it doesn't align perfectly with a payroll, which are usually our biggest expenses. And so there's two processes that a district can utilize usually to, uh, address short-term borrowing. One is a line of credit from a bank, uh, and you can just go down to your local bank and say, hey, we, there may be opportunities where we need to short-term borrow for a couple days, a week, a month, and we'd like to get a, uh, process in place with you for when that happens. And they'll set up a, a system, you know, it's like you could do that as a individual. The other way to do it, and this is the way that Evansville's done it for some time, is to, uh, get a 12-month note that you borrow, you know, put in the bank and then utilize it to, uh, maintain cash flow throughout the school year. And for us to do that, we have PMA, the group I told you about a little while ago, uh, coordinates the, uh, solicitation of a loan at the best interest rate possible, uh, for us. And they've been doing that, uh, at least for the last couple of years for you guys. And that has to be done in September so that we have the revenue we need to, to get through the school year. And so they need some information from us, uh, you know, later that, um, you know, they would like to take action on August 23rd. Soliciting the best rates for us for that loan. This is kind of a C-drill thing that, you know, a few years ago, he said, nah, we don't want to do that anymore. We could go to the other method and do the, but either way, uh, so is, is short-term borrowing is unnecessary the last few years to get through the school year. Now with the interest rates up a little bit, you know, a little more interest than we would have a few years ago, but it's, it's still a relatively, we, for the opportunity to make sure that a lot of our bills are paid on time.
Any questions? Thank you, uh, LMS support proposal.
I am, you okay with it? Just gonna kind of be blunt and cut to the chase here. Um, what I'd like to do is remove this proposal, won't be seeking any action this evening or at our next board meeting. And I wanted to give you a little background as to why and how we got here. Um, as you know, Lori Crandall has been hired as our library media specialist. Call her, her LMS, there's an acronym for it. She works, you know, and she heads up all the libraries in each building. A lot of what she has to do is very kindly in August, September and October. And as she's diving in, we just wanted to get her as much support as we could. Also wanted to get that on the agenda sooner than later. Talked with CISA 2 about some of the great supports they could have in place and it's not at all, as I looked at the price tag, it would be a challenge for us at this time. So we, we looked in some other avenues, connecting with other groups, connecting with the DPI and, um, LMS specialists in, in other schools. Uh, we can, we can get Lori that, that support pretty early, even, even as early as August and into September. Should we identify some additional needs throughout the year, we can certainly do that, but, uh, the supports she needs without taking that path. Rather than, you can take it off the agenda, I just wanted to give you a little background.
Thank you. Assistant volleyball coach proposal.
Did you want to maybe speak on that for?
Yeah, so I think it, it's plain and simple, we had a lot of, a lot of girls volleyball and we don't have enough coaches to coach all the girls that are out there, um, to safely have them be monitored within the gym when you get, I think it's 60 plus girls are out right now. If they don't have enough coaches, you just can't do what you need to do. So that's the baseline for the proposal. It's, it's pretty plain and simple, I guess, just the numbers you can see. Um, our, our current coach has done a great job increasing numbers every year and, um, which is great. We have a lot of participation, but now we need more help supporting the volleyball players, so.
And I think, uh, more teams because if.
Yeah, you'll have three levels probably, so there'll be three games running and they just need more coaches so, cause they usually run them all at the same time or two at the same time and then run varsity afterwards. So part of it is you just need staff, cause then when you travel as a team, they're like, you can't just leave a group of girls unsupervised and have all your coaches in the gym with the other group. So we just need more staff to be able to run the program.
We have hired assistant coaches at the middle school level for this incoming freshman group because they've always been a big athlete group that has been involved, so we've been there, but just at the middle school the last two years and now. And those needs, it's good to see our numbers are continuing to increase.
Yes.
So do you want me to understand that? You're still going to need that coaching?
Not at the middle school as of right now.
Okay, so that money could travel to the high schools.
So we've just come to the board when we see their numbers are, are really high, like that's not enough, um, support for the number of kids that are involved, so, um, it's not a standing budget item, it's just, if we needed more, then we come to you guys and say, we need more. it's not a standing budget item, it's just, if we needed more, then we come to you guys to say, we need more. So it just follows the trend of that group.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Not that it mattered.
Well, and an assistant coach is, you know, between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars, so it's, it's a, and then there'll probably be a few busts, you know, a bust here, a bust there, but it's a relatively inexpensive cost for buying a nice opportunity for our students.
If we, we didn't do it, would you have to tell students they couldn't participate?
That would be a possibility. We may, we would possibly have to cut athletes because we couldn't run. Yeah, that would be the other option, if we don't, then we may have to look at cutting athletes just because we, you know, we wouldn't have the support. If we don't want to do it, hopefully.
If I remember correctly, we have never cut kids from athletic programs.
That's what I have been told. From my, in my experiences, yes, that's true, but not in my time, you know, we have never cut anyone, so.
On fifty-four kids on three teams, there's a lot of kids sitting on the bench not playing, and, and that's not why they're, they want to participate, so. To me, he's, I, he support us.
Thank you, is there any other questions, I don't think?
I do think we should make them all go for cross-country too.
What do you think? Because we have lots of room to run.
You need another coach for that.
Yeah, you might need another coach, be careful what you say. You go to across. Isn't that a thing we're doing? Yeah, across.
Alright, um, transportation requests.
I provided them the request in, uh, in your packet. We had a parent in this, uh, family of God, said the email that you can see there, lives on, I'm still struggling with why it's called North-South Fifth Street. Is there a South-North Fifth Street? But I, it's just down the, the way here, uh, by the entrance to the high school. And it's, the street is not set up for people to walk on it. So the houses where Miss McGaw lives are on the side of the street, and there's a big drainage ditch there. You know, instead of having storm sewer, they just put the ditch. And, uh, doesn't make for an opportunity for people to walk along the shoulder of the road. You could easily fall in there, and it's, you know, probably about three feet deep. And I would imagine that a lot of times a year, it's very wet from rain, or once the snow starts flying, it's going to be covered with, with snow. I talked to Go Right Way. They did have, uh, Miss McGaw's daughter has been able to ride, you know, as she stated for the last two years. But Go Right Way shared with me that she and Miss Burgos allowed her to ride on a temporary basis. And I, I don't have specifics on why it was temporary. Miss McGaw said that she was told they were going to bring a request to you to make that an unusual hazard. After driving around over there and looking at that ditch, to me, it does make sense to make that part of North-South Fifth Street an unusual hazard from, um, West Croft Road all the way up to Abbey Drive. At Abbey Drive, there's a sidewalk on the east side of that street, you know, all the way as far as I drove. So I think that would give kids an opportunity to have a safe way to get to school from, once you get to that Abbey Drive. My recommendation, and I would be, uh, you know, bringing this forward at the next board meeting, is to make that unusual hazard and pick up any students that live on that section of North-South Fifth Street.
Is this the section that you, this is Union, right? Is this the one where they determine that, they've determined, Union has determined that it's unsafe as well?
I guess.
Yeah.
And really, it's, it's, it could say it's unsafe and you could say it's not. I mean, it's up for the school district to make that decision, but, you know, in my opinion, just looking at that road and, you know, just the experience I've had with over the years in the school districts and transportation, it's not a good place. There's no good way for kids to walk over there.
Are there other areas within a two-mile radius that people could say are unsafe?
Uh, there are a couple, yeah, that Go Right Ways already identified. That's Croft Road is considered unsafe, so that we're right. So I think probably most of them have already been identified. I'm not sure why this one hasn't.
Been identified, and we're busing?
Yeah, we busted all those other areas that are identified. There's probably a half a dozen of them. Miles that Go Right Ways already. Don't.
Because my concern is, once you start deviating from
Right, yeah.
policy, then, you know, you just, and I know we have some discretion.
Yeah.
But where is the line that you draw?
Well, you know, if there were other areas with a big ditch like that along the side of the road, where it'd be hard to walk. But I didn't, I don't, I'm not aware of any. They did show me, Go Right Way showed me their map of the areas that are considered unusual hazards within two miles. And my guess is they probably identified them all. I mean, could there be, um, the one here or there? Yeah, like last month, we had two that made a request and, you know, analysis of those two areas, and my opinion, did not need to water, um, nature this one.
Is that information that you could share with the board, the, the hazard?
Yeah.
I think it's public somewhere. I've seen it, I will check on it.
Yeah, I have the map, I can show you. It's kinda hard, I mean, it's a little digital map, but
And just be, nice to be aware of that.
They, what's the road?
Hole ninety-two?
Hole ninety-two is, most of that is hazard. You know, I did notice over on Sixth Street, they're building a bunch of houses, and it doesn't look like they're putting any sidewalks in, you know? That falls, you know, like, okay, then are people gonna say, well, we don't have No sidewalk isn't necessarily a hazard. I live in Orfordville, and, and there's no sidewalks at all in our subdivision, but it's certainly not dangerous. Car every two hours drives down the street. You can just walk on the curb, you know, along the side of the road, as people do. So, you have to take every issue, if situation, but it does sometimes get people to start asking. Sorry, it doesn't meet the criteria.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to business action. Action on high school, middle school handbook updates.
Um, if I could just say just a couple things before Mr. Crandall and Ms. Katzmeier, yeah. I'd, I'd just like to have everybody keep in mind that these handbooks that they've been working on, they're a guide that are meant to inform admins, staff, students, and parents. And just like our board policy, you know, our, we have approved board policies, and they're the rules that we follow as a school district. Doesn't mean that they are flawless and, and never, you know, have the opportunity for change. And that's why we go through a, a process regularly to check and review them and update. This handbook is a similar type of situation.
Steve, point of order. This is a business action item, we need a motion first before we can before we can
I'm sorry, that was my fault.
Okay.
And mine, I shouldn't have moved it.
So we need a motion to action item.
No, I mean, I don't see it.
I'm moved to approve the middle school student attire section and the high school student attire and code of conduct sections of the handbooks.
Motion. Second.
Now you can
I'll just
Just tell the question.
So, I won't repeat myself, but just like a board policy, this handbook is certainly not, um, immune to needing some updates or some revisions from time to time. I think they've put a lot of work into it and, and talked to students and staff and, um, have a plan that will help them, um, facilitate the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And, and they're gonna re-regularly evaluate and, and revise as needed. And I, I'm confident it'll always need some revision and some updating as, as they use the tool, they're gonna go, oh boy, this would have been better if we did this or that. So, I just wanted to say that, I said, I, I appreciate all the work that, uh, Mr. Crandall and Ms. Katzmeier put into this.
And I'll just add, we, we, after taking this feedback, we met with the student group, Kim and I did, and showed them the handbook, or showed them those, the, the stuff that we get. One response we got back from one of the students was, I really like how it told me what I can and cannot do. That was their perception on it. So some of that language that we were, we liked, how it's being perceived, they liked it because it, it was black and white to them, like, I cannot wear this, or I cannot do this, or if I choose to do this, this is my consequence. So that was what, that was the feedback from the students. I know, uh, Kim reached out for, I think, eight or so parents with the, all, all the stuff, and got feedback from a lot of them. Gave her feedback back, both positive and little tweaks that we made from that point of view as, on it as well. Um, so we were able to reach out to a group of students and a group of parents. And then our staff has been involved with it, um, along, along the way as well. So we, we felt that we've hit a lot of the groups and tried to really take the feedback, and then also go reach out for some more feedback from other people to make sure we were not missing anything, but still had everything we felt we needed for a building to move in a, in a, in a good direction and have that, that was, things called off for people, so they just know what expectations are.
I appreciated the, the changes. I appreciated you, uh, re, uh, um, adding back the, um, the language around protected class, protected populations. I appreciated that, and I just appreciated the, um, the, the paragraph and just the focus on, uh, talking about restorative practices. And, you know, I'll say that I, I talked with Steve, I sat down and talked to him about this, because, you know, there's parts of it that I don't like, and I felt like, and I said, can I prove it if I don't like all of it? And, you know, so I talked it out with him and just his, you know, discussion about this, that this is always going to be something that we return to, and that there's going to be things that you guys find maybe you like or that you don't like. And just having that understanding is helpful for me, because there's parts that I like and parts that I, I, I'm not really okay with, but I also understand that we, we need to have something for students right now, and I appreciate the changes. From not, from a philosophy standpoint, I'll just note that I did go through and would be happy to send this to you, just some language things, consistency around using words like, um, family and, or a parent or caregiver, and not using words like guardian or family, just to make sure that we're clear, you know, in words like, I didn't know what mediation was, but I figured that was restorative. So, so I, I'm happy, you know, to go in
We would be more than happy.
Okay, yeah, because it's just, I just went through, you know, after reading the whole thing, I went through just for consistency and stuff like that. And marked every place where I saw it, so just deciding on what words you would use and, um, because if I'm correct, is mediation same as restorative?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, we went through it so many times that stuff started looking
Yeah, I'm sure, and it's, I don't see
There was gonna be tenses and stuff that we knew we were gonna miss, because we were spending a lot of time looking at the same document.
Okay. And then restorative supports versus restorative conversation? I'm just curious what the difference is.
So, so like, a conversation is what it states as a conversation, where supports or actions would be, you're gonna be asking the student to do something along with it. So like, if I was in a classroom and Mr. Schwartz was my teacher, and I did something not good in that classroom, I may have to go have a conversation with Mr. Schwartz, Schwartz, and then also maybe help him clean this classroom or do something else along with him to help prepare that relationship. So it's kind of just another level of restorative practices, as opposed to just the con, because a lot, you can get a lot done in a conversation. And I would say, in my opinion, three-quarters of the kids you have that conversation with, you don't have to have that same conversation, but there's the other quarter that you're gonna have to go back, and then you gotta go to another level and continue to progress when they are not correcting their, their behaviors or their choices.
That feedback actually came specifically from, um, one of the parents, because they worked with kids. It's a former special ed teacher in a different district. And he said, you can have conversations until kids are blue in the face, and they walk away, and they're like, you know, but if you ask them to do something, if there is a, an actionable thing al- along with your conversation, um, they're way more likely to change their behavior. So that's where using words like supports and action, um, were purposeful. That make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
There any more discussion? Question from eight?
I'm moved to approve the middle school student attire section.
We already did that.
You said that, what, Mr. Crandall?
I agree.
Oh, my board didn't come up, so I didn't see that. There, thank you.
Passes. Alright. Moving on to consent. Anybody want to remove anything from consent? If not, motion.
I'm moved to approve consent agenda, agenda items A through C.
There's a motion, is there a second? Alright, let's vote. Motion for a second. Alright, five. Future agenda. Anybody want any changes to the future agenda or edits?
We would just be adding the transportation proposal, that action item. That we talked about tonight.
Is there anything else? Alright. No, I think we should take a five-minute break.
Was there a question, was it?